I'm called to order the meeting of Monday, September 23rd. If the clerk would please read the roll.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Moller.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. You have before you the minutes from the regular meeting of September the 9th. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole, is there any additions or deletions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as submitted. We do have one presentation tonight. If the clerk would please like to read that.
Kalia Commissioner Curtis Holt will present the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies Reaccreditation Award to Chief Michael Reeves, Port Huron Police Department.
Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. As the clerk said, I'm the Commissioner for the Commission on Law Enforcement Accreditation. I'm also the City Manager in the City of Wyoming, Michigan. And joining me tonight is our chief, Jim Carmody, who I know is all very familiar to you, and we're glad he's in Wyoming, and I'm sorry for you some, but I think you've done a great job here with Kalia. So, the Commission Chair, I'm here representing the Commission Chair Lou Decmar, the Commission President Sylvester Daughtry, and we're glad to be here tonight to give you this award for Kalia accreditation. I just want to talk a minute about Kalia, the goals of Kalia, so you understand where we come from as we do this. The goals of Kalia are to strengthen crime prevention and control capabilities, formalize essential management procedures, establish fair, nondiscriminatory personnel practices, improve service delivery, solidify inter-agency cooperation and coordination, and increase community's and staff confidence in the agency. The certificate itself is matted here, has a nice matting paper with a frame, but it really has a lot more symbolic meaning than that. The certificate clearly represents the agency's effort to achieve accredited status thereby demonstrating its willingness to change in order to effectively address contemporary public safety concerns. It represents a commitment to doing the right thing and doing it in the right way. It represents adherence to a professional goal. And lastly, it represents an ongoing dedication to ensuring the agency's resources are appropriately developed, effectively deployed, constantly managed, all in the name of a safer community for the workers, visitors, and customers that they serve. Your agency itself, this is their seventh Kalia accreditation award. That makes them a meritorious agency. That's 21 years of being an accredited agency. I think there are 10 accredited agencies in Michigan, and this award represents, I think, probably one of the longest accredited agencies that we have in Kalia nationwide. Kalia has about 1,000 accredited agencies nationwide, and your 21 years as an accredited agency really speaks to the professionalism in the agency that you, that serve your community on a daily basis. So I'd like to just say congratulations to you, chief, an outstanding accomplishment. And again, what a great agency that you have here, and I think the citizen support here on, the council for Port Huron, you should all be very, very proud of what this represents, of the agency that represents you, and of these leaders who have made this all a reality. So congratulations, chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your accreditation, and thank you for your service, because I think it's outstanding.
Thank you very much. (applause). Again, I was new to the Kalia accreditation process when I came to this agency, and I have to give due to those that are really behind the effort, although my name appears on the paperwork and the supplemental, it's always people behind the scenes that get a lot of the work done. It is my understanding that our last, this accreditation was the first time in the department's history that we received an accreditation that had absolutely zero marks, meaning no mandates, nothing found whatsoever was an actual clean slate. That may have happened before, and I'm not aware, but I was told that's the first time. Captain Jeff Baker headlining the Kalia credit process, Gail Fazinski worked hand-in-hand and coordinated the gathering of the proofs and stuff, and these two need to be, they did a yeoman's job. They are the ones that really are the driving force behind our process. So I appreciate their work as much as their award, as it is the rest of the departments.
Well, thank you very much. We're very proud of our police department. Thank you.[331.03][331.03](applause). Now is the time for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council, if they'd like to come forward, we have, you have, please give your name and have four minutes, and I think you know that, don't you?
I figured that one out already. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, distinguished council members, Mr. Brown and the ever-effective Sue. How are you this evening? I saw in the newspaper that we were addressing the city manager's contract again, and I was kind of pondering some of the progress I think we were making through a very difficult time in our history here in Port Huron, and looking at what's going on downtown. My wife and I like to ride our bikes down here by Edison Shores, and I'm thinking, you know, this thought, this would never happen without the efforts of Mr. Brown. And I'm concerned that if we kind of stumble through this process of another search for a city manager, you never really know for sure what you get. Sometimes you get a winner, sometimes you kind of stumble through, and even if you do find a winner, it takes them some time to really get acclimated to the community, understand who's doing what, who to contact, to develop that trust. And I guess, you know, I would suggest to the council, or at least like to throw out the idea that I think it may be wise, and at this time in our history, that we set forth some consistency in this office with the progresses being made with the police department, how we're addressing crimes, blight, neighborhoods, rental units, and I just think at this point, maybe the wiser course would be to see if there could be agreement made where we extend Mr. Brown's contract for two or three years to give that consistency so we can continue on the progress we're making. I'm just really pleased with what I see that's going on in this city. Council's doing a nice job. Police chief's leading a very effective and efficient department, and so my suggestion is tonight, just want to come down and say, boy, I think Mr. Brown's doing a good job. I want to speak individually and say, maybe we need to have the uncertainty removed for a few years, continue the progress we're making. I think we're heading in the right direction. Thank you for all your service, but I want to share my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to make a comment? If they come forward, give your name, and you have four minutes.
Kathleen McCready, 4014 14th Street. I wanted to thank all the candidates for council and the mayor for attending the voter registration event at Harrisonville on September 19th. The conversation was second to none, and that was much appreciated from the Harrison Point Neighborhood Watch Group, and I assert, or I assume, from the candidates. We look forward to working with the current council and manager, and the future council and manager on making the Harrison Point neighborhood a better place to live and work. I would also like to thank the CVC for working with us on the event. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council?
Trina Evedisian, 15th Street, Port Huron. I'd just like to reiterate, I emailed you all on resolution number two, and I would just like to reiterate my feelings on that and have you consider that while you're making your decisions tonight. And moving on, I would like to invite you all to Beer Fest, otherwise known as Oktoberfest, on September 28th. And the reason I call it Beer Fest is because we've got several Michigan breweries, I think. If I counted the last time, we've got at least 10 Michigan breweries coming to that, 70 beers, 50-plus beers, I should say, and then some other beers that are coming in from out of state like clown shoes and things like that. So we're going to have some music and some food, and we're going to kind of celebrate all our Michigan breweries here on September 28th, right over here in Kiefer Park. We're partnering with Wolverine Market. And on October 12th, I'd like to invite you all to come to see A Silent Dream Show, which will be at McMORRAN. We have two shows, the 3 o'clock show and the 7 o'clock show, and this is a compilation of all, a lot of different area musicians, myself, Mark Rucker, who produces it. We have a band called Soon To Be playing. They are 14, 15, and 16-year-old kids, and they play better than any band I have heard anywhere. These kids are phenomenal, and so you've got to come out and see Soon To Be. We also have Dale Beavers, who is a local musician, plays southern blues and rock, and we have Dave Everett, who plays trumpet, and he'll be joining us as well. So if you can find the time, come on out and see A Silent Dream Show. The tickets are $12 right now. You can buy them at Ticketmaster. If you search A Silent Dream Show, you'll find it. They're $12 in advance and $15 at the door, and all the proceeds go to the United Way campaign drive that's going on right now, so we're trying to raise some money for the United Way. And just so you know, Mark couldn't be here tonight, but he wanted you all to know that children are for free, or under 12 are free. So if you can come, it's going to be a lot of fun. We've got some great music, so I hope, see you there.
Trina, you didn't say what time the Beer Fest was.
Oh, sorry. Well, we can't forget the Beer Fest, because I mean, it's all about the beer, right? It's noon till 6:00. And the tickets are on sale over at Wolverine Market right now. You can go call the store and they'll reserve you a ticket. It's $35 to get in, you get 15 tokens, and you can sample all the different beers. We also, we're going to have Mead there also, which is an Irish kind of thing, and we're going to have some wines too available, so if you don't like beer, we'll have some other things. But the tickets are on sale at Wolverine right now, and that also, the proceeds are going to actually, Andy's working with us, and Andy's a wonderful guy, I just love him to death, and he's going to donate back to Art on the River to help us produce Art on the River next year. So that's pretty cool, too.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council this evening? Seeing no one, I'll declare public comment period closed, and we will move on to, from the city manager.
Number one is accepting the bid from Northgate Ford in the amount of $45,984 for two 2014 Ford interceptors for use by the police department.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We'll move on to number two.
Is accepting the unit price bid from Morton Salt in the amount of $41.03 per ton for backup delivery of salt.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protam Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there discussion? I just wonder if Mr. Clay could tell us how this rates with last year's prices?
Mayor Rep. and councilmembers, the ever-fluctuating salt price. This year, it's $41.03. Last year, it was $49.12. I think the lighter winters we've had the last two years have had an impact, just as we've seen when we have heavy winters, we see an impact that way, but the price is actually lower.
Always nice to hear.
Yes.
Now Morton Salt is now in Chicago?
Well, it's their home office, so it's, they have facilities everywhere, but their bids come out of their Chicago office now.
Okay. Is there any other questions for Mr. Clay? Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
If there's no other discussion, we'll take the vote.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We'll move on to number three.
Is accepting the quote from Utilities Instrumentation Service in the amount of $10,556 for preventive maintenance to the main electrical switchgear at the water filtration plant.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We'll move on to item four.
Is accepting the bid from MJ Mechanical Services Incorporated in the amount of $29,800 for building duct work at the wastewater treatment plant.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protam Archibald, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, councilmember.
Can we just have them explain what they're doing?
Sure.
Mayor Rep. and councilmembers, this particular activity is to repair duct work in our tertiary or our rotary sludge thickener building.[955.32][955.32](laugh) Easy for me to say. And it is, it's to transport air to our odor control facility. So it actually transports air that needs odor control through that building and into our stacks that provide odor control before it's, the air is released to the outside.
Is this an improvement to what we have now, or is it pretty much going to be basically the same type of smell coming out of it?
This, when we installed the system last, there was some existing duct work that was used when we installed the new odor control system, and this is some of the duct work that remained. This duct work is approximately 30 years old, and the other duct work we installed is only about 10 years old, so this will be replacing some of the material we didn't replace when we put in the new odor control system.
Anything else?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, council.
Are there signs that it needs to be replaced, or do you just look at it being preventive?
It is, actually has holes in it currently, and it is deteriorating quite rapidly now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
If there's no other discussion, we will take the vote.
Accepting the quote from Jack Dohenny, oh, I'm sorry.[1043.13][1043.13](laugh)
That's okay, Sue.[1047.13][1047.13](laugh) Just start over.
Councilmember Lewandowski.[1053.33][1053.33](laugh) Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Now.
Accepting the quote from Jack Dohenny Companies in the amount of $9,909 for a hydraulic power unit and a hydraulic pump for use at the wastewater treatment plant.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Cole, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We'll move on to resolutions. Number one.
Is authorizing the purchase of several properties within the Nern Street area, CSO Sewer Separation Project.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protam Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, councilmember Lewandowski.
Because what's the plan for that property after we're done? Is it something that could be built upon, that the new people that buy would have to improve the sewers on it, or is it something that's just putting it off down the road?
Mr. Clay.
Mayor Rep. and councilmembers, if you would indulge me, I do have a brief PowerPoint presentation that would explain the purchase of these, the purpose of these purchases. Might be helpful to you and to the public. I think the council's aware of what we're trying to do, perhaps the public is not, and then I'll try my best to answer councilmember Lewandowski's question.
That's fine.
The Nern area Utility Replacement Project, which is of course our CSO program, the last scheduled one we have to do, is located in the southwest corner of the city, shown in the shaded area on this map. The area entailed is approximately from 32nd Street to 24th Street, and then from, I'm sorry, can't read that, north of Van Ness to Dove. One of the properties we're looking at is on 27th Street. As you can tell from this aerial photograph, the density of the housing in this particular project area is quite different than the density of the housing in any of our other sewer separation projects. In that, there's quite a bit of vacant land. When we look at the cost of improving infrastructure, we look at the costs of doing pavements, installing water mains and sewers, and we think about who is it there to serve, how many properties, that sort of thing. In this particular case, what we saw is we were put in a position of building very expensive utilities to serve vacant lands. So what we did is we looked at, is there a way to facilitate reducing the amount of infrastructure we would have to construct, and what would the cost be to acquire several properties to reduce that, that investment into that new infrastructure? The other component of this is once infrastructure's installed, it must be maintained. As you are well aware, I come to you regularly with costs for maintenance, things like equipment and supplies and materials to maintain these things. So we also save maintenance costs by reducing the amount of infrastructure we construct. In this particular case, we're acquiring the property shown here, and what we would intend to do is on 27th Street, and that's between Cleveland and Nern, is we would only build part of that street back, we would extend the utilities just to the few homes that remain, and we would reduce the city's expense for the original capital and the ongoing maintenance of those facilities. There's also one home located on 30th Street between John L. Portis and Van Ness, and that particular property is the only one there. As you can see, the rest of the land is vacant, part of it owned by the school, part of it owned by the city that was acquired properties in the past. What our intent here would be is to not replace the utilities under 30th Street over the stretch, and we're going to eliminate the street, put it back in grass and so on, make certain it drains properly, but we will not have to maintain that surface either. This is the property in question. The homes that face John L. Portis will be, will be served off of Nern for utilities, and they'll have access to their homes appropriately from Nern, but the road itself on 30th will go away. Then there's five vacant lots on this section of 30th, and we're, because the properties at the end are going to remain, there's two properties at the end, we will have to complete utilities and street improvements here, but this is an opportunity to assemble some property that could be used for future development at a very reasonable expense. That's where those properties and what they look like. Here's our projected savings. Now, we have not bid the project yet, however, our current estimate for the project is somewhere in the neighborhood of $6.3 million, and that includes the savings that you're seeing on this chart. The estimated cost to construct all the utilities and the street improvements, half a block of 27th and the, and the 30th, Nern to Van Ness, with total $727,000. The acquisition, estimated acquisition cost was $95,000. We have since learned that the total cost of these properties will be more like $89,000, according to the agreement we recently saw. So it's even a little more savings than I show on this chart, for an estimated savings of about $600,000. So it seemed like something we could bring forward to you as a possibility in an effort to reduce the cost of implementing this very pricey program.
That means the street will be closed in those areas, then? Is that it?
What we'll actually do is remove the pavements.
Remove the pavement.
We'll abandon the utilities that are there, and then we'll remove the pavement and put it back in grass or whatever, and that way, it's open land that's available for, if, if there's a development that comes in and fits in that space, then the land will be clear, it'll be available. Utilities will be nearby, be readily available for any type of development purpose that someone might have, but the real goal of this particular effort that you're seeing tonight is to reduce the initial cost of that infrastructure, because there's no one there to serve.
Mayor Rep.
Before, just a second, because I don't know if Alan had his question answered. Are you all fine? Okay. Councilmember Moller.
Bob, if you could go back on the slide for a minute to 27th Street.
Yes, sir.
In reality, we're not saving any money by purchasing that property either, because the street's going to go there.
Well, we will, I mean, we will, in that, some of the utility extension expenses are lower, and where we're placing that, end of that road, is affecting that property. We would have to extend it a little further.
But we're not saving, we're not saving what we're putting into that. And go back to 30th Street. You're not convincing me, Bob, we're saving anything there, but, so anyway, go back to 30th. We're not saving anything there either, because those two houses are to the north of the property, so we're not saving any money. The only place that I can see where we're actually saving money is south of John Portis Drive there on 30th Street, because that whole street's going to be vacated, and we're not going to have to reinvest anything. So we're going to save $342,000 in reality. The rest of it, you put it up there that we're saving, but we're not saving anything. We're going to have to put that in there.
Well, on those five lots, that's true. I respectfully.
Yeah, there's no savings there.
The one on 27th, there's some savings there.
But not what you're, not what you're saying, not what's being given to us. I mean, you still got to take the street down there, and you still got to put everything in, the street, so you're going to add 10 feet more pavement.
There's a little more, there's that, and there's some utility work to do, yeah. That's correct.
But the total dollar figure you came up with is?
Is estimating, we've included all the acquisition of property, and we included all the savings by doing what I showed you, which is not building the piece on 30th and not constructing this part of 27th. All of that is.
So the total savings.
So the total savings.
Where it's laid out is not.
Yeah, that's correct.
So the total savings, based on what you're showing up there, if we purchase 30th Street, sell to John Portis, the property that belongs to Mr. McCarty, that's our truly, only our true savings, and that's, your estimation is $342,000. The rest of it, there is no true savings, it's speculation. A small amount on 27th Street, but you don't have a figure, and it's certainly not what you have posted up there. Certainly not $290,000, because you're still putting that part in anyway, and you're still going to block off the other end. So I'll give you $90,000 for that.
I'm assuming that your total figure is still your total figure.
My total figure is still, you know, I mean, it's an estimate. Until I bid the job, I can't give you exact, but, you know, based on our best estimates with what we've done, assuming those properties don't exist, these are the net savings.
But there is no savings on 30th Street, north of St. Martin's.
That's correct, and I don't, I don't show any on this slide.
Okay.
I mean, that's true.
And there's very limited savings on 27th Street.
Well, the savings we're having for 27th Street is shown in that number. I don't know how to answer your question.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who has any?
Yeah, Mayor Rep.
Yeah, Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I didn't get a chance, and I'm sorry that the assessor isn't here, but I look at the property on 27th Street with the $35,000 price on it. I'm just wondering, in today's market and the location of this is, are we paying a premium for this property? It seems to be, to me, to be excessive where it is and the quality of the property.
I'm sorry, I can't speak to property values. It's not my area of expertise.
Does Mr. Brown have any, do you have any about the properties or the value of the property?
I don't.
I do know that we did have someone look at all the properties in the area and give us estimated costs for acquisition. And all the numbers they gave us for acquisition were higher than what we ended up paying. That's all I can say. But I don't know value of property. I'm only going by what they told us they would calculate for budget numbers compared to what we paid. We paid less.
That would have cost us $100,000.
Yeah, they had much higher projected costs. Bruce, if you recall, when that separate consulting firm kind of came in...
That was $100,000 for the property and their service.
But I'm certainly not a property purchasing expert. I'm just not.
$5,000 for a vacant lot is probably a pretty good price. The lot on 30th Street, after the city council gave the approval to proceed, the very next day, that property was in play. And we purchased that at the last moment. So I think that's probably a reasonably good price. The other ones, I don't know if we did an appraisal or not. But if the one on 30th is worth 27, I think the rest of them are probably in the ballpark.
Yeah, because the one on 27th Street is at $35,000.
Yes, Councilmember Mueller.
I was just curious, Bob, do you know who the owners of the property are?
No, I'm sorry, sir. I don't know the answer to that question. I didn't, I wasn't part of the process to negotiate the purchase, so I don't know the names of the...
Does anybody know who the owners of the property are?
Do you have the names of the property owners?
No.
No, these were all purchased, obviously, by someone else, so...
They're willing sellers.
They were, yeah.
Some of the property owners in the area didn't want to sell. That's why, if we could have acquired more, we would have done less infrastructure. But that's what we could acquire.
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I guess I'm kind of confused then with the, I think it was the five vacant lots that we're looking to purchase. What is the exact reason we need those, then? If it's not going to have any savings there?
I think it was for, I think, Mr. Kleaks, that was for future development, those five lots.
I believe that, I believe the goal was to have them available for land assembly, if any development were to come together.
That part of the price was...
But you're right, there isn't any savings to the project, I accorded.
Mayor Rep.
I will say this, we've had some discussions with an industrial developer just north of this who are interested in expanding. And this is one area they could expand into.
Can you put that picture back up for me?
I just want to look, because there's houses on either side. Are they going to buy those houses? Where's the industrial?
It's up to the north. The piece at the end, if you take, if you go to the cul-de-sac and go to the right...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just lost it.
I got it back.
Go to the right, that piece is in play for a major new industrial user here. And they are talking about, long-term, adding to that property. And the only way they can go is south.
You got a laser pointer, I'm not seeing where you're... So the property to the left of the purple squares there, the vacant lot, is what they own already?
We own.
We own? All right. All right, thank you.
Is there any other questions, discussion?
Yeah, yes, Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Mueller.
To answer one of the questions as to the property, the fair market value on the vacant lots is $4,000. So based on the law of, if we were to use eminent domain, we have to give them 1.25, which is $5,000. That's where that figure comes from, I would assume. Because I did the research, okay? So I'm assuming that's where the realtor came up with the figure because... But I don't see, as Councilmember Lewandowski says, I don't see the savings, so I'm not going to support it as is. If you split it, I don't have a problem with the property and 3,000 block of 30th, but... Because obviously, there's a savings there to the city, but I don't see it the other. As far as future development, there's other lots there. As Councilmember Lewandowski, if they wouldn't sell to us for 125% of the value of the property, I don't know what the companies are going to give them. And all that vacant property on the other side of the street is owned by the city, so there's plenty of room for development, unless the city just doesn't want to sell property. And then lastly, I just think to present this to the city council without the information, not against you, Bob, but I think as, to vote on this, I think we're being left out of the loop as far as who the property owners are and that. Management should have had that for us. I think that's not an unreasonable question to ask as responding for the, responding for, representing the citizens. So, not against you, I just think that should have been nice or would have been nice to know, so, thanks.
You can look it up, bro.
Is there any other discussion, questions?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I'd like to offer an amendment to purchase the 27th and 30th, get rid of the five vacant properties and purchase the other two for the project.
Is there a second for that motion? Councilmember Harris. So you're saying everything but the vacant lots?
Yes.
So that's minus $25,000. Is that correct? Have those, I guess I would ask the question, the way it's worded on this, those have not been purchased yet, or have they been purchased?
They have not been closed.
Those have not been?
They have, there are purchase agreements, but they have not been closed.
Were those properties part of the original discussion? Do you remember?
I think they were. Bob, were those part of the original Nern discussions?
When we met with council in January and spoke about this, we talked about many other properties. And certainly, they would have been amongst the ones we spoke to about. In this particular case, if we were able to acquire the two properties to the north, we could have saved, you know, dollars on the project here. So certainly, they were included in the discussion we had with you in January. But we can't save the infrastructure costs because those other properties, they weren't in our selling those other two.
But the lots were part of the discussion at that time?
Yes, they were. Yes, they were, yeah.
Because I don't recall anybody objecting at that time to the lots being purchased. So, I'm not sure if you were at that meeting, Councilmember Mueller? It was a special meeting?
Oh, I was, sir.
Were you there?
Yep. There was a lot of property that was discussed. And I thought the understanding was that we were going to give it all or nothing at all. I don't see any advantage to buying that. As far as, as City Manager said, further development, it's with those two houses there, I don't know how we're going to go in there and change it from an IR1 to a manufacturer. They're going to have to buy, somebody's going to buy those properties, so... If they wouldn't take 125% from us, I agree with Councilmember Lewandowski. I don't see the advantage of it, but...
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
We have purchase agreements in place. What will we lose should we choose not to go ahead with these properties? With earnest money that we lose if we don't purchase those properties?
Because we've already...
Because we have a purchase agreement in place?
No.
I guess I would be more inclined to think that we have questions that need to be answered. I don't know if it's something that's important that we adopt this tonight, is it? Or maybe we just go ahead and do the, what was suggested as the amendment? And if there's some other reasoning for the other one, then bring it back to us at a future date on the lots. Does that work?
We'll do whatever you'd like to do.
No, I'm just curious. Yes, Councilmember Lewis.
I have a question for Councilman Mueller. Just curious, as to why you wanted to know which families were there, were selling? Who were the property owners?
I'd like to know who the property owners are.
May I ask why?
No. You can ask, I'm not going to answer you.
I understand that.
Okay.
Why the reason was, that'd be a delay in purchasing? One of the reasons that you used.
I'd like to know if the property was bought recently. And that's why I want to know, I want to know who were... Are we buying it from the person that owned it for the last 40 years? Or are we buying it from somebody that went out and bought it six months ago and now is trying to make a profit on the city at 125%? That's what I'm doing.
I can answer that. We're buying it from people that have owned it for 40 years.
So what's their names? If you know how long they've owned it, why don't you know their names?
I don't have their names.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, is that important? If you have somebody who wants to sell their property?
Yes, it is.
Do you care what their name is?
Yes, I do.
You do? I don't.
Well, we have an amendment on the floor right now. And that is to, yes, Councilmember Mueller.
I was also at that meeting. I was at the meeting when we had this in January. And I don't think there was any motion made. Correct me if I'm wrong. There was just an understanding that this was going to be the goal. There was no vote taken.
That's correct.
Okay, so...
That is correct.
Right, so there was no action taken by the city council. Thank you.
There was not, because there cannot be in an executive session. So it was just a discussion because, obviously, before you pursue something like this, they let us know. And to go out and negotiate a deal, you're not going to let everybody know that you're doing it because then the price does go up, so... Anyways, we do have a motion on the floor as far as an amendment. That would be to eliminate $25,000 on the vacant lots. We have a, any more discussion on that part of it?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Mayor from Tim Archibald.
What is our timeframe on the purchase agreements in place on the vacant lots? If we were to postpone that piece? When is the decision, when does that purchase agreement run out?
Do you know when the purchase agreement runs out?
I don't. I think they're pretty open-ended. I think that we wanted to get a couple of them paid off because there are some issues as it relates to timing. The five lots are not.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment to remove the five lots? Then we will take a vote on the amendment, please.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. So now we have the motion before us on the balance of the property. So if you would please call the roll on that? Are we still discussing that?
May I ask for clarification? What's on the floor?
I need clarification.
Okay. The last motion was to eliminate the vacant lots on 30th Street, which is five of them, out of the total cost. So the rest of it is to the houses on 30th Street and 27th Street.
Correct. Okay, so you're doing, the First Amendment was to eliminate the vacant lots, whereas, and this one is now, you're left with just the purchases?
Correct.
Of 27th and 30th?
Correct.
Mayor Rep.
Am I right? Is that, that's what's left? I just want to confirm that also. Yes, Councilmember Mueller.
Okay, let me just clarify. I support Councilmember Lewandowski's motion because I believe it was the right thing to do. I don't believe that we should be buying the property on 27th Street, though, but I support the motion as Lewandowski made it.
Okay. Well, right now, we have before us the amended...
Right.
Yes, motion which includes then selling the two pro... It's the two properties, the one on 30th and the one on 27th Street. And that's what we're voting on now. Does everybody understand on that one? Okay. Wait, does Sue's got her chart together?
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Okay, we can move on now to Resolution Number Two.
Is approving a six-month extension to the city manager's contract.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro-Tim Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there a discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
I guess my issue with this is, and I know Bruce's done a good job and things like that, but I guess the issue that I have is this process, because of the selection of city manager, has delayed the process of the search for a new city manager. I really think that by dropping the search until January has basically forced into a situation where we have to keep Bruce for the simple reason that, you know, we aren't going to have this process done. I don't think we're going to have this new city manager in place till maybe March or April. And I think that that's our fault. I really think it's our fault. I think that to extend it six months might be a little bit too aggressive. I think that if we looked at it, whether it be three months or whatever, I think that would be a better place for our city and more explainable to me and some of the residents of Port Yarn.
Okay. Is there any other comments or discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Mueller.
I don't have any objection to extending it six months other than the fact is I don't believe that this council, one month, four meetings, is going to make a difference. If we all are back here again, then we can extend it at that point. And if we want to extend it, as Mr. Miller said, for three years, and that's what the council wants to do at that time, that's fine. But to me, let the new council do it. And if we're all back here at that time, fine. If we're not all back here, fine. So I just don't think it's something we should be voting on. And if Mr. Harris is correct, and we get a new city manager in March, then we're going to be paying for two city managers for four months, unless we tell the new one, you know, we're going to hire you, but you don't start until August 1st. So, and that person probably won't stay, lay in limbo that long. So I'm going to oppose it based on those grounds.
Is there any other discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Mayor Pro-Tim Archibald.
I respectfully disagree. When we talked about our search the last time, we had built into place that we were going to search early enough to have Mr. Brown stay on long enough to do some hand-holding and some training and some introductions throughout the community and to stand and advise on existing projects. And I don't see that we're doing anything different now than we were going to do before. Furthermore, out of respect for Mr. Brown, who has a family and a life and needs to make plans for his future, I don't see that we can ask him to keep his plans on hold indefinitely and constantly keep trying to decide, is it a month? Is it three months? Is it six months? Can you wait? Can you not? So with that in mind, I fully support our process and moving forward as soon as possible in replacing Mr. Brown and finding a new city manager. I have absolutely no issue with keeping him and extending this for six months.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Cole.
I guess just to address the question of, you know, dealing with this now or waiting until after, I know the election is on everyone's mind. You know, as Mr. Mueller mentions, is that even an option to extend Bruce's contract after November? Would that still be, you know, as Councilmember Archibald just alluded to, he has a family, you know, is that an option that would still be on the table in November? Or would it be too late at that point?
Anybody else have any comments?
I just would like to say, obviously, we started this process, I'm trying to remember when we started it. I think it was like April, wasn't it, or May, something like that? And at that point, Mr. Brown was not leaving till January. So this is really the same timeframe, looking at it now, forward to extending it for six months out to July. I mean, the timeframe is the same timeframe we were working with before. Granted, you know, I know it's been brought up about the election,
Granted, you know, I know it's been brought up about the election, but I don't really think so much it's about the election, as it's just, at this point, we've gone this far, and you get into Thanksgiving, you get into Christmas, you get into New Year's. I, I have talked to, to many people who hire people, and I've talked to a lot of people that are city managers and different things around the state. That is not historically the best time to go looking for a new job. People don't have that. That's not what they're thinking about doing around Christmas. They're thinking about celebrating with their families. So chances are, we probably, even if we went out right away and solicited, we would not even be into the process until January, at which time Mr. Brown would be scheduled to leave. So I don't think for the sake of the city and, and, you know, for the good of the community, and that's what I look at this, is the good of the community, is to continue with some consistency going through, and I don't believe that that's incorrect to go through till July. We will start the search accordingly so that we don't have a long layover or anything like that, a long overlap. We could start it, it doesn't have to be January 1st to start it. We'll start it in time. And I think that, you know, there's a lot of things that are unsettling for people to come to communities, and I think there's other communities that also have same problems. Obviously, I think there could be a whole new crop of applicants after the election in the sense that there's, you know, there could be other places where people are looking. And, and sometimes that's what people are looking for, is stability, and they're looking for, they want to know who those people are. So I don't think it's wrong that we've postponed the search. And I will say that I have received many phone calls, as a matter of fact, to the positive. I've received two communications in the email that said we shouldn't extend it, but I can say I have received probably as many or more phone calls about this than I have about a lot of issues the city deals with. And to Mr. Brown's credit, a couple of them were from, one from Fort Grashit supervisor, and she didn't, said she did not mind if I mentioned that, that she called me today. And she encouraged that, said that this is the best relationship that the Fort Grashit has ever had with the city of Port Huron in the 15, 17 years. I can't remember what she said, that she's been there, although she's been a new supervisor for the past year or so, and how helpful Mr. Brown has been, and the meetings that they have with the different communities. And I understand they meet once a month with the different townships around, and the city of Marysville. I've also had a call from, from the manager of Marysville. All of these people are very supportive of what's been going on, and do credit Mr. Brown with, with pulling everybody together. And I think that's something that we really have to think about, because we are, we're not just one community, we are a whole region, and with funds the way they are, we are, need to work with everybody. I think that's evidence with the recreation department, how they've worked with the different communities. And there was a time in history where we didn't have that relationship, so I do thank you for that. And I think that at this point, it's, it's very good that we continue on, and, and I'm certainly in support of the six-month extension. And I didn't mean to talk quite that long. Is there any other discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Mueller.
I would just like to respectfully say that I disagreed when we started the process way back then.
Yes.
I thought we started it too early. So I'm not changing my attitude any, or my stance any. And also, you know, and I understand Mr. Brown has a family like we all have a family. And if Mr. Brown can't wait a month for, to make that decision, to hold his family in advance, then it's a terrible loss for us and for him. But who knows what department head out there that could run the city for six months could turn out to be our next city manager, may never have thought of it. But we certainly have qualified department heads that don't know their sure potential and could be the next city manager, or if we brought somebody in. So, again, you can say that you don't believe it has anything to do with the election. With me, it has everything to do with the election. And if we come back here and, and we're all reelected to the same positions, then I don't have a problem with it. But I just, my feeling is, let the new council decide. So I'll be voting no.
Any other discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Ruiz.
I agree with, first, I'm appreciative of Bruce agreeing to extend his contract, and that, that stability is what I'm looking for. And we did go through the process. I was pleased the way the process worked. Didn't work to our advantage, because obviously candidates were looked upon in their own communities as good people because they secured some other positions. What we were advised by the people who've been through this process a number of times has been right after January, start the process again. And the timeframe allowed for us to work with, looks like we would have someone in place, I would think, by July. And again, we have stability. I think our department heads are great department heads, and, but I'm not looking at extending any more responsibilities to them. I think they have enough on their plate as is, and I'd like to keep that in place as such. And if they choose to apply as city manager candidates, more power to them for doing so. But I'd like to, I'm supporting this, this measure.
Thank you. Well, I think everybody's pretty much commented at this point, so we'll move forward.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
No.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Mueller.
No.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We'll move on to resolution number three.
Is amending the licensing fees for pawnbrokers, secondhand dealers, and precious metal and gem dealers, and setting a reinstatement fee for suspended or revoked licenses.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lewandowski. Is there a discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Mueller.
No.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. Move on to resolution four.
Is confirming and approving single-lot special assessments for the cost of demolishing dangerous structures.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.